Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to another meeting of the Union County Board of County Commissioners. This is the Thursday, November 4th, 2021 Agenda Setting Meeting. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Yes Chairman, Commissioner Garrettson.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmary Mudad.
Here.
Commissioner Staton.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams and Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
Chairman, you have eight commissioners present for the Agenda Setting Session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Will you please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly, we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, while everyone's putting their video back on, can you please read the Statement of Compliance with the Public Meetings Act?
Certainly. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the Administration Building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and good evening and welcome to another remote meeting of this Commissioner Board. As always, we have a lot of ground to cover, so let's get started. I'd like to congratulate all the candidates who won their elections on Tuesday and also congratulate the people who ran but maybe were not successful. They also worked hard and did what they could to help represent their township or their county or their state. And I appreciate anyone taking a chance to get involved, to be involved, to be part of the process. And I really want to thank all who participated. I also want to congratulate directly my friend and colleague Commissioner Palmary Mudad, who won reelection and will be entering her second term. I'm delighted for that. And also proud to welcome our new member, Rowway Councilman James Baker, to the Board, and we look forward to his service. Turning now to other matters, we continue to provide COVID-19 vaccine to all Union County residents ages 12 and up, free of charge. Vaccinations for children 5 to 11 has just received approval and will be rolling out a program shortly as well for those youngsters. I really can't stress enough how important it is to get vaccinated. The virus is still active, it's still deadly, and it's still on the attack. If you need a free COVID vaccine or you need a free test or if you need emergency food supplies and other resources, please get in touch with us. You can call us, email us, follow up on social media or visit us online at ucnj.org for all the latest updates. I want to thank everyone who participated in the last month's gun buyback program. Union County residents turned in more than 500 guns in that single day, October 23rd. Many of these guns were in working condition, were kept around the house, which raises the possibility of theft, misuse, or other problems. Thank you again for taking this important step to reduce the gun violence in our community. I also want to thank the prosecutor himself, Bill Daniu, and his team for their tremendous partnership in this gun buyback program. The prosecutor is working hard to keep our community safe and we're trying to do our part to help him do that. I also have some good news to report on our efforts to preserve open space in Union County. We're moving ahead with the acquisition of vacant property in Berkeley Heights and plan to use it to restore part of the Passaic River Parkway. I'd like to take time to thank Berkeley Heights Mayor Angie Devaney, as well as County Manager Ed Obed for their work creating this rare opportunity to add more land to our public parks. I'd like to thank Human Services Director Debbie Ann Anderson for her work partnering with this board in launching the Fresh Start Initiative. This is a new outreach service that combines in-person guidance with mobile laundry, shower, and restroom facilities. This is the first county-based service of its kind in New Jersey. The Fresh Start Program will bring essential services and additional resources to our unsheltered residents, including those left homeless due to a natural disaster or other emergency. We also continue to support the efforts of FEMA to provide federal assistance and disaster relief to those impacted by Tropical Storm Ida. FEMA has extended the deadline to apply for individual relief to December 6th. So if you believe you're eligible, please visit disasterassistance.gov to get the process started. And we're working with FEMA to help our residents apply for disaster-related food benefits under the D-Snap Program. We'll be announcing additional details as soon as they're confirmed. On another note, I'm happy to report that our Century Friendly Theater Series continues at the Performing Arts Center in Rowway on Sunday, December 5th, at 1:00 PM with the classic ballet, The Nutcracker. Century Friendly Theater is a wonderful resource for parents with special needs children. It provides a welcoming, judgment-free space to enjoy enriching activities in a community setting. Please go to visit the Performing Arts Center online at ucpac.org. Now let's turn to a special presentation. I'm really delighted and proud to announce that we have this presentation tonight celebrating Diwali. And I would like to thank both Anjali Mahalcha and Rudy Patel for agreeing to help this board celebrate Diwali for the first time publicly. And as I mentioned, or will mention, that I anticipate this will be a yearly celebration of this board. And I'm really excited to hear more about Diwali, of course, I'm aware of it, but hear more about it and what it means and how we're celebrating tonight. So I'm going to turn the floor right over to Anjali for this presentation. So thank you, Anjali, for coming, and also for you, Rudy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to all the Union County Commissioners, but especially to Commissioner Palmary Mudad and to you, Commissioner Mirabella, for... You know, Rudy and I came to you with a request to do this, and it was on very short notice. So I'm really happy that we were able to put this together. And as you said, we will continue this tradition, and hopefully next year we can do this in a much bigger way. I'm going to start our little presentation that we're going to do on Diwali. I'm going to start with lighting an incense stick. In the Hindu tradition, we usually do this to cleanse the air of negative energy. And then I'm going to recite a mantra. I'm going to recite the Gaiyana mantra. This mantra is considered the most powerful in Hindu scripture and translated by Swami Vivekananda. It reads, "As we meditate on the glory of that being who has produced this universe, and may she enlighten our minds." Om Bhur Bhuvah Swaha, Om Tat Savitavarayam, Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi, Diyo Yo Na, Raja Daya, Om. So today is Diwali. Diwali or Diwapali is India's biggest and most important holiday of the year. The festival itself gets its name from the row of clear lamps known as Deepas or Dhas that Indians light outside their homes to symbolize the inner light that protects them from spiritual darkness. This festival in India or to Hindus is as important as the Christmas holiday is to Christians. In northern India, it is celebrated as the return of Lord Ramah to Ayodhya, his home, after he defeated the demon Ravana following 13 years of exile. In southern India, it's celebrated differently as the day that Lord Krishna defeated the demon Naraka Shiro. In western India, the festival marks yet another iteration. It is the day that Lord Vishnu is supposed to have banished the demon king Bali to rule over the netherworld. But the common theme that binds all of these stories is that Diwali celebrates the triumph of good over evil. Rudy?
That's right. I'm going to continue what Anjali said. I'm going to give you a little bit more about Diwali's. Over the centuries, Diwali has become a national festival that's also enjoyed by non-Hindu communities. Celebration in the different parts of India range from like two to five days. Some communities observe the day following Diwali as a new year. Others simply observe it as an auspicious day to close their businesses fiscal year, pretty much like an auspicious day that brings a lot of prosperity to their business. During this festival, observe and decorate their homes with lights and lamps and roll out their finest linens and goods. It is customary to mark the new beginning with the new clothes for all the members of the family, the cities around the country home with the sounds of neighbors, families, and friends gathering to exchange gifts and sweets and light fireworks. So it's pretty much like a celebration, it's a get-together. Family events, friends, for gifts, prosperity, blessings, and, you know, prayers and a lot more. Very auspicious festival. I'm going to give over to Anjali, and she's going to go into a little bit more and explain the significance of our gods.
So as I mentioned before, it is the holiest day of the year in the Hindu calendar. Most Hindus actually offer prayers to Ganesha, the elephant god, who is believed to be the remover of obstacles, and to Lakshmi, the goddess of wealth and prosperity, so that she can shower prosperity and keep their homes safe in the coming year. To signify this, I'm going to ask all the Commissioners now to join me in lighting a Dia or a Deepa to signify peace and harmony and celebrate the victory of good over evil as we choose light over darkness every day in the coming year. Thank you. I know in the package that you received, you also received the incense stakes and some sweets. So happy Diwali to everybody, and I hope you enjoy the sweets.
Thank you so much, Anjali and Rudy, for not only the beautiful presentation that you both just gave, but for the candles, which we'll all, I'm sure, cherish and keep, and for explaining a little bit more about Diwali to all of us and to the County of Union. It's an important holiday, and I'm glad we're celebrating it this year and in future years. So I really appreciate the time that both of you have taken, and I wish you a happy holiday and enjoy your celebration tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, giving this opportunity and celebrating with us. Thank you all, the Commissioner.
Very good. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Now we're going to move over to the business portion of our meeting, although I probably could have enjoyed more conversation about Diwali. It's a wonderful, wonderful holiday. And we're going to move right to the office of the Union County Prosecutor, and that is Prosecutor Daniel, although I know some of the assistant prosecutors are here too. So let me turn it over to the prosecutor's office.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me, Chairman Mirabella?
Yes, we sure can. We don't see your video, but we can certainly hear you.
Okay, oh, we can start our video now. Starting the video, thank you, right there in the middle.
Terrific.
What is... I apologize for having... Oh, there. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So this, Bill Daniel, Union County Prosecutor. I have First Assistant Prosecutor James Tansy with me. Good evening, Chairman Mirabella. Good evening, Commissioners, Directors. Union County Prosecutor's Office has six resolutions on for your consideration this evening, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have of us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prosecutor. Any questions? I see Commissioner Granados with his hand. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman. Prosecutor, can you elaborate on number one and number two and the difference between both resolutions?
Sure. There are two separate grants. And they cover, the first grant covers the period of time from October 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2022. The other grant, again, it's a separate, they're both federal grants. The other grant covers the period of time, October 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. So they overlap for a period of time. And this is to allow, this will cover the costs of per day on victim advocates. We're expanding the use of victim advocates throughout the county in various areas. The first grant covers primarily sexual assault-type cases, strangulation-type cases. The second grant focuses primarily on domestic violence victim witness advocate-type services. And allows for training, just trying to expand our services throughout the county. We have advocates on staff, but these advocates will supplement, necessarily supplement, the services already being performed by our staff.
With those victims who are suffering from, you know, cruelty, the things that have gotten placed in their life. So we thank you for that. Thank you, Prosecutor. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for the prosecutor? Mr. Prosecutor, I have a question, but I did want to tell you that I appreciate your resolution number five, working with Prevention Links and the Helping Hand Program. It's a wonderful program. Prevention Links is a terrific organization that does so much good in our community. And I'm thankful and glad to see that partnership continuing with your office moving forward. So thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are very, very thankful for the services provided by Prevention Links as well. The work that they do for victims of offenses, substance abuse, residents of our community, it's just outstanding what they do. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So thank you.
Terrific. And before I let you go, I mentioned it a little bit upfront, the partnership on the gun buyback and, you know, First Assistant Tansy and your staff and the law enforcement throughout our communities coming forth that day to collect those guns, get them off the street. It was important, and it worked out very well, and I'm glad that we could participate with your office to make our county that much safer moving forward. So thank you again for your partnership there.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your partnership. Without your partnership, as well as the partnership of the Union County Sheriff's Department and the Union County Police Department, we would not have been able to have such an overwhelmingly successful event, and we look forward to the next one.
Yeah, I hope we'll do it again next year. That'd be great.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Appreciate you and your service.
Yes, thank you.
Let's move on to the office of our sheriff, and that is Sheriff Pete Corvalli. Sheriff?
Evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The sheriff's office has one resolution on the agenda for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions for our sheriff? Got the grant for body worn cameras. No questions. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move to the Department of Economic Development. That would be Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me, good evening. The Department of Economic Development has four resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Deputy County Manager? Nope, doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management, and that is Director Graziano.
Evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have two resolutions on tonight for your consideration, and I'll try and answer any questions, Jeff.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Director Graziano? Okay, doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Department of Finance, Director Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Finance has seven resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for the director? Okay, doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Director. Move to the Department of Human Services, Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has six resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Director Anderson? Not this evening, Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Zuber.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Department of Parks and Recreation has three items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions, Jeff.
All right, Director. Thank you. Any questions for Directors, Uber? I don't see any questions, but I actually have one question, Director, for you. So I see number one, doing this archaeological survey at Greenbrook Park. That sounds pretty interesting to me. Is that the first time they're doing that? I mean, I know that up in the reservation, there's always some archaeology going on up there, but is this something new for our park there?
This was brought to us from students and professors at Monmouth University through the Plainfield Historical Society, and it is the site of a Revolutionary War encampment, which included George Washington. And what they're trying to do is do radar and sonar testing to see what the camp might have looked like, and they're also going to use detectors, metal detectors. If they find anything, they're going to catalog it. After they clean it, it will be returned to the county, but they're just trying to get a better understanding of what happened in that time in Greenbrook Park, what is now Greenbrook Park.
Interesting. Well, it's very interesting to hear about that. Thanks for that information. All right, Director, no other questions. Thanks so much. Move to the office of the County Council, County Council Bergen.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. County Council has one resolution tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for County Council? Doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Move to the office of the County Manager. That's County Manager Obed.
Evening, Sheriff. Good evening, everybody. It's a big night. The County Manager has three items on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Look at you. That's terrific. Any questions for the County Manager? Well, it's an equally good night for you. There's no questions, so that's very good.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. I see there the Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. If there's any questions or comments on those, typically there is not, so that's really good. So thank you. I think that concludes the business of our agenda meeting, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Taken. Moved by Commissioner Granados, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mudad? Commissioner Palmary Mudad is active via phone? Commissioner Staton?
We did not hear your responses. Are you...
Aye. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Got you. Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams? Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
I'll just try, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
So you have eight, Chairman, you have eight Commissioners voting to adjourn this meeting.
All right, very good. We are adjourned. Is there any reason, Mr. Clerk, why we can't go right into the regular meeting?
Chairman, we can go directly into the regular meeting.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. I'll call this meeting to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, November 1st, November 4th, 2021, and ask Mr. Clerk to please take the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Hudak?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Palmary Mudad?
Here.
Commissioner Staton?
Here.
Vice Chair Williams? And Chairman Mirabella?
Present.
Chairman, you have eight Commissioners present for the regular meeting?
Thank you, sir. Please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. While everybody's putting their video on, Mr. Clerk, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the Administration Building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Very good. We'll move on to the approval of communications. May I have a motion to approve the communications? Moved by Commissioner Kowalski. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Staton. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados? Sorry about that. Commissioner Granados? I see he said yes. Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mudad?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on the adoption of the communication?
Very good. Tonight, we have three ordinances for introduction. Mr. Clerk, please read the first ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 833-2021, an ordinance to amend the laws of Union County Administrative Code and policies and general legislation by amending Part 1, Union County Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Union County Government Structure, Article 21, Department of Public Safety, Section 1-128, Office of Health Management, and Article 24, Department of Economic Development.
Very good. May I have a motion for this ordinance, please?
Some of...
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski. May I have a second, please? I will second that and ask, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Prior to announcing the vote, just wanted to acknowledge that the ordinance for first reading, that the move, I'm sorry, that the motion was to move ordinance number 833-2021 for first reading and to authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law and that the public hearing will be scheduled to be held on December 2nd, 2021. With that being said Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on the introduction of ordinance 833-2021.
Very good. Nice work, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the second ordinance and read that by title.
Ordinance number 834-2021, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal system equipment, new information technology and telecommunications equipment and new automotive vehicles including original apparatus and equipment in, by and for the County of Union, State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of forty-nine million seventy thousand five hundred and forty-four to pay the cost thereof to appropriate state grants and county open space trust funds to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Very good. I'll ask Commissioner Houdak to move this ordinance.
I move ordinance number 834-2021 for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. Public hearing for the scheduled, for the, is scheduled to be held on December the 2nd.
Thank you. Commissioner, may I have a second please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leon. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Houdak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams and Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on the introduction of ordinance 834-2021.
Very good. We'll move to the third ordinance by title 835-2021. Mr. Clerk, please read that.
First 835-2021, an ordinance fixing the salaries of members of the Board of County Commissioners, the County Manager and Department Heads.
Great. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Houdak to move this ordinance please.
Thank you Chairman. I move ordinance 835-2021 for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing will be scheduled to be held on December 2nd, 2021.
I'll second Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski will second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados? Yes. Commissioner Houdak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Here. I didn't hear the votes.
That, that is nine votes in the affirmative for the introduction of ordinance number 835-2021, Chairman.
Yes, and let me welcome the Vice Chair to me. Thanks Vice Chair. I want you to be clear that you were voting in favor of 835-2021. Were you on long enough to?
No, I was not.
All right, so you do wish to abstain of this?
Yes, please.
So let's, let's make that note, Mr. Clerk. I know the Vice Chair was just jumping on when the rule was being called, so in fairness to her, I think we'll, we'll catch her up on adoption.
Thank you.
Under, understood. So we have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention.
Very good. All right, let's move to the, to suspend the rules. I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment for any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of our county into one public comment session. May I have that motion please?
I moved.
Moved by the Vice Chair. May I have a second? Second by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados? That was a yes for Commissioner Garrettson and a yes for Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Houdak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for the suspension of the rules.
Very good. The meeting is now open to the public for anyone wishing to speak on resolutions being adopted, offer adoption or any other matter. Mr. Clerk, I know we have several people, somebody who wrote in some comments, so why don't we handle those comments and then we'll go on to any other speakers that may be available.
Certainly Chairman, I received one email to read into the record by Mr. John Burry, Kenilworth, Union County.
Good.
Question one, recently, the 1.5 mile trail between Black Brook and Nomehegan Parks has recently had a lot of trees cut down along the path. Is anything planned for that area beyond what has been done so far? Comment one, returning to in-person meetings serves no purpose outside of the opportunities for photo ops. Offering taxpayers no option to address the board other than to go through the gauntlet of attending these meetings and taking the occasional abuse is a disservice to taxpayers of Union County when it would be so simple to continue to accept emailed or Zoom comments and questions. Comment two, on the assumption that there is not much to steal for politicians in Kenilworth. I have not been paying attention to what has been going on there in the last few years, but apparently our current ruling party has found stuff. When a tenant project was being rammed down on us, I took notice and saw excessive fees for engineering and legal services which I am investigating. To that end, my second question, question two, based on the county check registry, Harbor Consultants has been paid one million four hundred eighty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars since 2004, which is the earliest my data goes, through 914, 919, but nothing since. What can you tell me about the situation with Harbor Consultants currently and why they have not been used since 2019? Is that it? The end of the comments.
All right, let's move to the trail question. Maybe Directors Uber has some update on that?
Yes, thank you Chairman. My lights are on, sensor, so they went out, sorry. That, when that job started in September, that was a job that was requested by DEP and part of the, part of the work included taking down trees that were alongside the berm and, and quite frankly, people got used to those trees being there. Now, we will be planting trees throughout the park system, but we're not allowed to plant trees on that berm upon completion of that project.
Okay. All right Director, that satisfies me. Thank you. We will be going, yep.
I'm sorry, let, let me just add, like Director Zuber is aware of this, but let me just make it clear that this, the recent trees have been taken down is because it's a flood control project. That, as, as the Director said, it's been ordered by the DEP. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Thanks for that additional information Commissioner, I appreciate it. Okay, regarding in-person meetings, we will be returning to in-person meetings in December. So our two December meetings will be in person at the Administration Building and and I for one, I'm looking forward to getting back together with my colleagues on the dais and working with the public and working with directors through our meeting agendas. I'll ask the
Chairman, if I could add, the, what you're saying is the, the meetings in December, December 2nd and December 16th will be in person. I'd just like to add that the start time of those meetings will be 5:30.
Okay. All right. Good, I know that's been published, but I'm glad you added that note, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for that. All right, we're gonna move to the County Manager who can shed some light on, on Harbor. The question rose around Harbor. County Manager Oatman?
Thank you Chairman. I think the first question was about the situation with Harbor. I'm not aware of any situation with Harbor. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure when they were used last or what projects they're working on, but all of our projects go out to the low, we select the lowest bidder. We still get several quotes and we select the lowest bidder, so I mean, I'd be happy to use Harbor again if they're the lowest bid.
Very good, County Manager. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, anybody else in the queue?
Chairman, we do have one individual in our queue joining us on our Zoom meeting tonight is Mr. Bruce Patterson.
All right, Mr. Patterson, you're up. Mr. Patterson, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Garrettson of the Commissioner Board, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Reso 819, this is for renting thirty parking spots from Sharma Realty for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Last December, I had asked before about this location, since this is an ongoing business that he is basically renting out all his parking lot to the county and I questioned if he is taking advantage of the county, since he has to use parking spots too. I never really got an answer to this alleged scam. Reso 821 and 822, these resos are giving a total of two million dollars to ShopRite and a total of 1.3 million to Gargulo Produce for providing food for the Union County Food Distribution Event. I'm not opposing these resolutions, but these are huge numbers for food for the last one and a half years. It looks like we are not just feeding the hungry, but we're actually feeding the whole county with no real accountability, just whoever drives that. Are these monies covered by the Federal American Cares Act grant? Reso 827 and 828, these two resolutions are counseling unexpended grant balances and capital balances. Please explain to the public how much money is involved and also where is this money going for? Possibly the running fund balance. Reso 830, this is an adjustment to internal position controls, jobs transfers and assignments. Please give a rough overview of who, where and what department. 832, giving Mazer Consultants another sixty-five thousand dollars, the total's five hundred thousand dollars. Only for professional work, not actual construction of free culvert. Definitely a wow number. This project dates back to 2010 and the question is, why is this project from 2010 still ongoing? And is this now closing out or what's still to go? 845, this is giving Winning Strategies of Washington three hundred thousand dollars for two years to provide lobbying for the county to Washington. This could be a big black hole, since we have US senators and congressmen that is supposed to represent our county down in Washington. You're including that Menendez Booker, Malinas, you are pretty much useless to us, that you have to go out to actually hire someone. I'll agree with your assessment of our government officials are pretty useless, since I really don't see much from them. How would you be paying this three hundred thousand dollars? Reso 846, Cap C is one of the good guys. I'm glad you're involved with them, granting them quarter of a million dollars. They're in the business to build strictly affordable housing projects without the four times, five times, six times luxury market rate rentals that private builders force on towns. Please give an explanation as to the public what your initiative project is about. 847 is giving Benevate of Atlanta thirty-one thousand dollars to expedite dispersment of CDVG for one year. Are you telling the public that with over twenty-five hundred county employees, no one can handle an Excel sheet to track dispersments? Where's our CFO, Bibby Taylor? Is she too busy relaxing at her 1.3 million dollar home out of county and studying for upcoming college exam?
All right, Mr. Patterson, stick to the issues on the agenda please.
848, this is giving Renad and Diappolonia Law Firm a total of sixty thousand dollars in the case of Moni. I see this for possible resolution in executive session. Renad Diappolonia has donated to Union Tony's political campaigns over thirty-three thousand for years. Reso 849 and 850, please explain to the public the changes to the Teamsters and the PBA's new bargaining agreements and restlessness salary increase.
Mr. Patterson, I'm having a difficult time hearing you. Can you be more clear?
Ordinance 845, 2021, this is listed at the last minute, basis all around, can you hear me? Hello?
I don't know what that, I don't, I'm not clear on what that means.
835, 2021, that's on the agenda. Must be a reward for winning the election. Who else would do it except the questionably corrupt the county.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson. I cannot hear you, what you're saying. I'm sorry to tell you that, but it is unclear. There's no way we can give you an answer. I cannot hear what your question is. I got all the way up to 849 and 850. I can't, I can't understand what you're saying and your time is up anyway, so I think we'll have to conclude there. Let's go through some of his questions. 819 and ask Director Anderson to comment on that issue and 821 and 822, Director.
Good evening through you Chairman. So for the Resolution 819 for Charmin Realty, again, social services in Elizabeth has the largest population. Parking spaces are you know, hot commodity in the city of Elizabeth, so working with our community partners that own spaces that can lease to us is a great partnership and thirty spaces at seventy-five dollars a month is a deal to the county not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars on an annual basis, so that's my answer. Hope that is clear to you. Yeah. You know, Resolution 821 and 822, again, from the 2021 food distribution season, we have given out about nine million meals. This is funded through the American Rescue Plan and also is through the American Rescue Plan money, but the issue is, food insecurity is a real issue. If someone is lining up at 3:00 AM in the morning to sit in line on a food line, that means food is needed. And through the support of the Commissioners and the County Manager, we're able to do that through the American Rescue Plan dollars.
Good. Thank you Director, appreciate you. Director Taylor, on a high level, can you speak through 827 and 828 please?
Absolutely. Through you Chairman. First Resolution 2021-827 is canceling various grant appropriation accounts. Essentially, what we are doing is canceling a total of 4.76 million dollars worth of receivable amounts and then canceling 4.9 million dollars worth of appropriations. The appropriations are higher than the receivables because they also include a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of county match that has no bearing on our surplus amounts. Resolution 2021 is a canceled, excuse me, 2021-828 is a cancellation of capital balances. That amount, we are totally canceling four hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Of that amount, we are canceling two hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents, which are unfunded amounts, which has no bearing on surplus. The other balance of two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-one cents is canceling to capital canceling the funded portion of capital balances and that goes to capital surplus, which has no bearing on the operating surplus.
Okay, very good Director. Thank you so much. County Manager, can you add some?